...out today for this emergency work session. I'm going to begin by establishing a quorum. We have all but one here. I think we'll go ahead and kick it to Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board members. I appreciate you, Chairbooks, for calling this meeting so that we can review the progress we've made over the last two weeks as a district and the phase-in plan for bringing students back into the classroom. As a reminder, we've been phasing students back into classrooms over the last two months, starting with our students with exceptional needs back in September, right after Labor Day, followed by our pre-K through two students right after fall break, and this week, bringing back students in grades three and four. Next week, we are scheduled to start bringing back middle school grades with high school to follow in January. As of this Tuesday, 16,786 elementary students were back in our buildings. On this slide, which is Slide 3 in your deck, I've listed some of the protocols we follow when notified of a COVID-19 case in our schools. As a reminder, our school nurse program is actually based out of the Metro Public Health Department, and we contract with them to provide our nurses at schools. They are tasked with taking the initial steps, in this particular case, for contact tracing, working with the Health Department to determine close contacts and, as necessary, which steps should be taken once close contacts are identified. That information is reported to our Student Support Services Department, and we, as a team, must make determinations as it relates to closing the school based on the information provided, and that could include classrooms as well. Our goal is to keep families informed and to use contact tracing as a way of minimizing the number of students who must quarantine while also minimizing the risk of transmission or spread within our buildings. Now, it is important to note that this is an evolving situation. The Centers for Disease Control recently updated the definition of a close contact to include multiple brief exposures along with one continuous 15-minute exposure. And this is just about a two-day-old update from the CDC. You should be aware that any significant guidance or policy changes outside of our control regarding our COVID-19 response will have some level of impact on our current plans, including this one. So this is a significant change for us with regards to how we contact trace our students. Previously, it was the 15 minutes in one setting, and this is a cumulative 15-minute period contact over a 24-hour day. So 24 hours, 15 cumulative minutes. In order to provide our school administrators with a one-stop-shop for information as it relates to COVID-19 and the reopening of schools, we have a place on our internal SharePoint site that has all the information that schools need to support their students, families, and staff through this very disruptive time. So everything from our health protocols to our PPE supports for our staff, including accommodations, information regarding transportation, technology, the multiple tiers of students that we support, along with communication tools, are all in one place to ensure our school teams have everything that they need. Of course, we have very unique learning communities, so we do empower our school principals and our leaders to make sure they're taking the best logical path and implementation to do what's best for their students and to keep their stakeholders up to date and well communicated The COVID-19 pandemic is clearly not over, and all indications are that this situation is getting worse here in Nashville, especially in Tennessee and throughout the country. You might recall that just last week at our last board meeting, I did acknowledge the fact that our numbers were concerning, and they've continued to increase over the last several days. When I announced the plan to phase students back in at the August 25th board meeting, Nashville was going in the right direction in several areas. And we said at the very beginning that the phase-in schedule will be followed if Metro Nashville continues to make progress in containing the spread of the virus. Since then, Davidson County has gone from green to yellow or red on several categories, and we've seen some alarmingly high daily case counts spiking at 441 just a few days ago. This is cause for a significant concern about whether we're seeing a similar trend to late spring and early summer with uncontrolled spread throughout the community. Our current transmission rate is now at the highest level since the Fourth of July weekend. Of all the metrics, the only one seeing improvement since we reported out on August 25th has been the positivity rate. However, the trends in the last couple of weeks have seen it go from 2.6% positivity up to 6.1 positivity. Last, we provided our first glimpse into what returning to schools looked like for a larger number of students and schools reopening. These numbers are with a limited number of staff throughout the district interacting with in-person students, and only about 15% of our total student population returned into class. Third and fourth grade students returned this week, and we are still gathering information about cases this week while keeping everyone up to date on our daily counts. Note that some of these numbers include student or staff who did not interact with the school building, but most of them were in person. Now, these numbers can be alarming, but we have not seen significant evidence that the virus is being spread in our buildings. However, it does take time to assess close contacts to see if those who are quarantined test positive within that 14-day window, and we're still within that window. All right, at the board retreat, there was some discussion about the comfort and risk tolerance level of the board. I hope this is an opportunity for you to discuss our plans and for me and the public to hear from you about whether you are comfortable with the current direction we're headed or if there should be a course correction due to the recent information about the public health threat here in Nashville. Now, we've been developing plans for many months since this pandemic began. Throughout it all, we've learned new things, we've adjusted our planning, and responded to conditions on the ground, as well as changes in state and federal guidance. We live in a time with no right answers and limited information or experiences upon which to make decisions. Three weeks ago, we were all happy with the direction the city was headed. Now, both Nashville and the nation have seen a spike in new cases in recent weeks, and we may be seeing our second big wave of the coronavirus. We can't know for sure where we'll be in two days or two weeks, but we can only see trends and forecasts and see that it hasn't been going in the right direction. I feel confident that our overall plans are designed in such a way to create as safe an environment as possible in our schools, as well as the best possible learning environment for students to learn in person and virtually while understanding the limitations of resources for an urban public school district. The question is whether any plan can mitigate the risk to students, staff, and their families with the community spread we're seeing now or could be seeing in the next couple of weeks. That's what I wanted to bring to you as a board to consider and discuss so that we can work together and determine the most logical path forward. So with that, Madam Chair, I do would like to kick it back over to you, and just one thing that I want to add to this discussion is, you know, again, highlighting the comfort level in the protocols, the procedures we have in place to mitigate the spread of the virus. And we've seen over the course of several weeks now our ability to do that within our buildings. The fact of the matter is that the external factors, the transmission and the level of exposure outside of our school buildings do impact our ability to operate at a high level and to protect those who might be considered a close contact. So I just wanted to emphasize that the planning, the protocols are in place. Our school principals, our teachers, our staff are doing a tremendous job. They're excited to see our students. They want to keep them protected. They want to educate them. They're excited to have them back in our building. So I don't want that to go unsaid because everyone is going above and beyond to provide for our students and, quite frankly, being overly innovative in the ways in which we connect with every student to ensure they continue to grow and learn. And I'll kick it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Battle. So I do want to say a few things to my colleagues before we get started because this is a discussion for us to give guidance to Dr. Battle, to let each other know where we stand, and to provide just input to the community. A couple of things. First, you will have three rounds to speak. Considering that we only have one hour for this meeting, please make sure that your comments, your questions, your thoughts are as succinct as they possibly can be. This is a discussion, but if you really must ask a question, please be sure to direct it to me or to Dr. Battle. She will then decide who should answer it. We do have a number of guests. We have Mr. Robert Fisher, Mayor Cooper, Senior Advisor for Education. He's here in the audience with us. Thank you for being here. We have Dr. Gil Wright, Associate Medical Director at Metro Nashville Public Health Department or Department of Health. Thank you for being here. We, of course, have our internal MNPS staff that are always on call, always ready. We appreciate the work that you all are doing. So you'll have three rounds. Again, you'll be addressing them to either me or to Dr. Battle, who will then call up staff or one of our special guests if needed. Please raise a finger if you want to be called on. Please do not just speak. I'll be looking around to make sure that I've gathered that I'm calling on you all appropriately, and I'll save the last for the end of our meeting. So with that said, please raise a finger if you would like to begin speaking or have a question that you'd like answered. Ms. Tyler, go ahead.
My first question is about the new CDC guidelines. Do we have a plan for how we're going to meet those new requirements? Whose responsibility would they be? And is that going to be district-wide guidance instead of school-by-school?
Yes, that will actually be district-wide guidance. Now, as a reminder, we have nurses currently who are leading this work out in our schools. We do contract with the Metro Health Department for our nurses, where they're trained, and we work in close collaboration with our definitions and how we contact trace. The good news here is that with our previous contact tracing, we were following the current definition, but we were also using a common sense approach to when we needed to make decisions to quarantine students. And so we do anticipate that it could have a significant impact, or some impact, I should say, on our quarantining potentially, but it will definitely and should definitely give us some, we should see changed behaviors, right? We've been monitoring under the 15 minutes at one time in one setting, and now it's cumulative. And so it will take continued communication, training, and guidance going out to ensure that behaviors change, because without behaviors changing, we will see a significant number of our employees and students being impacted. So those protocols are in place. This is just one shift for us in how we contact trace. But again, in order to minimize the level of contact tracing, we must change behaviors.
Thank you for that, Ms. Tyler and Dr. Battle. And I do want to remind us that that was a great question. This is a good time for us to engage each other, though, also, and to make sure that we are communicating to the community. But of course, if you do have a question, this is a great time to ask. This is really more about what we're seeing in the community and how that's impacting our staff, our students, and then unfortunately, their families. Anyone else? Ms. Masters?
Okay, so, and I have a little something to read. So it was my understanding from the beginning that when an in-person learner gets sick or has to quarantine, they remain assigned to their same teacher, and they continue to learn asynchronously through the Florida Virtual School curriculum. The student will not temporarily switch to synchronous instruction with a different instructor. So you keep your same instructor, whether you're virtual or in-person. Is that still, that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. So should an entire class or an entire school have to enter into quarantine, they continue to have a live teacher instructing them because their teacher is also in quarantine? In cases where we have individual students or only a portion of a class, and they are in quarantine but not with their assigned teacher, they continue with Florida Virtual's learning, but they no longer have a live instructor, either virtually or in-person. Is that correct? It is simply a log-on-and-do-it-at-home situation for the quarantined children?
Let me make sure, let me clarify your question. Is your question that if you have a single case, per se, in a class, and a student either tests positive or identified as a close contact, we treat that as very similar to if a student had a stomach bug or the flu. They would transition back to the asynchronous learning environment, and if their class and teacher remained in the in-person setting, they would continue to work asynchronously.
And so by that, they're not getting a stream of that live class in their home. They are simply logging on to Florida Virtual Learning and completing the curriculum requirements, but without the interaction of a live instructor?
Generally speaking, that's what you will see. But we also have amazing educators and employees that are going above and beyond to provide as much support as they can for our students. But we generally treat those cases like we would a normal excused absence, if you will, if a student was sick, and then reverting to their asynchronous learning at home. But staff members are continuing, we're feasible where they can to continue to support students in that scenario as best as possible. But there is not a expectation that our teachers would then revert to teaching virtually and in person at the same time.
Great. And that is really why I wanted to get at that clarification because I think we can all agree that our big goal is to ensure that every child in Metro Nashville Public Schools is receiving a high-quality education. In spite of the pandemic, there are different strategies for getting there. But, so this is a concern that has come up within my community, is the children who are sort of on their own through the quarantine, or feels as though they're on their own because of being quarantined, and just understanding that equity is our big goal. It's our big hairy goal in all of MNPS. I just want to be sure that we understand while a lot of schools are able to kind of go above and beyond and still ensure some level of live instruction for those children, in many cases, they're not sick. You can be COVID-positive and not have symptoms. So they would very much like to continue their education, but they're having to do so without the assistance of live instruction. So that is a deep concern, and that's, we get three go-rounds, right? That's all I'll hit on this one. Thank you.
And I'm looking for the next person, but I would also love to welcome Dr. Alex Jahanga here, MLK graduate. So of course, I appreciate you. And we do have a few doctors up here, but not medical doctors. So thank you for taking time out here to join us, be with us. We appreciate the work you're doing in the Nashville community. I cannot say that enough. All right, will I have another question, comment, thought up here? Because I'll bang the gavel up. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, like we were talking about rounds, I guess first round. So a big question that I have is, what are the top three things that we need as MNPS to do in-person learning the safest and with the least disruptions? So is it more PPE? Is it more staff to do the contact tracing because it's so extensive? Is it rapid testing? Is it the help of filters that we keep hearing about? And I don't want like a long list, but like the top three in approximate cost, though I know that a lot of them are going to be pie in the sky potentially costs. But what are the three things that we can actually be involved and impactful with to try to make it the best shot we can, particularly considering the increase of spread within our communities?
Yes, great question, Ms. Elrod. And I think, you know, first, I've got to acknowledge, I think in everything that I've read, and likely everything you've read with research, we've talked about the lack of kind of a national strategy in attacking this. So schools, local school districts, local governments are having to figure this out on an individual case basis, given the context for their community. The first thing I want to do is highlight where we have prioritized our funds. There's been lots of conversations about the CARES Act. We've also responded to and been awarded a few grants to help us prioritize our needs as a district. We have leveraged a great amount of our CARES Act funds around PPE, which we know is critical to our ability to be able to mitigate the spread of the virus. And we work closely with our unions as well to be clear about what PPE would be necessary for our students and our staff. And just to be clear, we are providing PPE for all of our employees and all of our students. So I just want to be clear about that because that was a significant investment. We have also leveraged our CARES Act funds around nutrition for our students to ensure that during this time of uncertainty, whether a student is learning in person or a student is learning virtually, we can meet their nutrition needs. We have leveraged a portion of our funds around nurses as well. Contact tracing is significant. It takes a significant amount of time to review rosters, to review schedules, to identify who kind of checks those boxes. It's contact tracing, and it extends beyond, a lot of times beyond, the building that the student is currently in. So we've had contact tracing go beyond just that one student's building because they've been in groups and connected to other students. We have also leveraged a portion of our funds around translation services and PD and curriculum. So those have been the top areas. We have responded to and received grants to assist us in other priority areas, including, first, let me acknowledge the $24 million that the mayor and Metro Council approved for us to become a one-to-one technology district. We have been awarded over a $7 million grant for remote technology to supplement the remaining needs in that area, connectivity, and reopening for additional supplementary needs to make sure our investments are protected, right, with regards to technology. So that's where we've leveraged our current funds. By leveraging our funds with the dollars we have available does not indicate that we've been able to cover everything in every school for every student and for every teacher. So we continue to have needs in that space. But as we're thinking about prioritizing safety, any safety measures that will have been recommended by the CDC that allows us to help mitigate the spread of the virus are helpful, you know, as we're talking about air filters and additional masks and additional materials for our employees. We have to prioritize instruction. We want to make sure that regardless if a student is learning virtually or if a student is learning in person, it is high-quality, and we're able to make the necessary adjustments to meet the needs of our students. And we cannot forget or overlook the basic needs. So when we're talking about nutrition, when we're talking about social, emotional learning, all of those needs are expansive. And so what we've tried to do is prioritize within the budget we have to make those additional adjustments, but we have continued needs in all of those areas.
May I ask a clarifying question within my round?
Go ahead.
So I want to make sure I understand, so going forward, we still are using, of course, our initial investments into the list of things that we just discussed. But ongoing, if we had additional funds or if there were places to make an impact, it would likely be within air filters, additional masks, and then curriculum. And my assumption is that's most likely in virtual curriculum.
Our continuity of learning plan is pretty consistent in supporting students both virtually and in person. And I'll just take us back to a normal year. Those will be normal needs for us right now as well. So we've got to continue to leverage and build the capacity of our team, both in the virtual and the in-person setting.
I am, so sorry.
Do it.
Am I still within my round? Okay. I want to make sure that we, if we are prepared for what's going to go forward, and we want to keep our students in person as much as we can, and we want to mitigate that risk not only for our students but our teachers, I would like for us to know as a board what we need to be the most successful. And so I would like us to have that list as soon as we can of what do we need to be the most successful if we don't have it? What is it that we need to make sure that we're meeting the demands that are put on us as the virus continues? And I will, I guess, ease my time and then make my next comments after more people go.
Okay.
Thank you both very much. Next, Mrs. Poofer Walker.
I want to talk a little bit about the people power, formerly known as manpower, that is required for this undertaking. So I want to hear a little bit more about the strain on schools and staff on the contact tracing. What is that? What percentage of like bandwidth is that taking and how much of a heavy lift? What has surprised you about how hard that has been? And then, you know, I'm hearing from middle school teachers that, you know, they're not going to, they're going to have too many students to be able to social distance, that they're going to have, it's going to be a real challenge for them to social distance. And part of it is simply the fact that in some schools, particularly mine, more people are coming back, right? And so is it a staffing situation where we need to figure out a way to staff up in the short term so that you don't have 30 kids in a class? And is that even a realistic scenario? I mean, what is the people power sort of, you know, number that we're looking at? What is the lift here?
Now, I think that's a kind of a great layer of a question to what Ms. Elrod just asked as well. You know, and I'm going to say this, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but what we really need as a city is low community spread. These metrics impact our ability in operating our schools at a high level. And when we have, you know, employee cases, we have students, all of that disrupts the learning environment. And I'm going to go as far to say, you know, with our youngest learners being transitioning back in person just after fall break, we're talking about young students who are still trying to grapple with what all this means, and then in person for a day and then told the next 14 days that they have to go on quarantine. That's a lot, that's to a degree traumatic for students. So I'm laying the foundation just to set the context for how I'm going to respond. You know, when it comes to staffing, generally, additional teachers and staff would help, right? Because that allows us to attack the problem with regards to social distancing, ensuring that we can space students out by six feet or more throughout the day, and the demands on the, talking about the in-person to virtual needs. And so that and our instructional staff and our support staff would be necessary to get us to that point of which that we can mitigate that contact and that spread even greater. With regards to our contact tracing, again, we're very thankful for our partnership with the Metro Health Department, but I think what you would hear is that contact tracing is, it takes a significant amount of effort and time. Part of our process is that our nurses are the initial intakers of that information, and they're tasked with working closely with the school team, identifying students, getting rosters and seating charts, and then connecting that to the indicators by which we would then quarantine a student. And that takes significant time, and I don't think that should be overlooked when we're reporting out positive cases, when we're reporting out quarantines, and those who are having to self-isolate, a significant time. And although the nurses are taking the lead in that work, our school teams, our teachers, are still having to take time to help and assist with their contact tracing, based upon if a student rode to school with their family, if they were on the bus. They are the holders of that information, and so it does take significant effort for them to do that effectively.
I just want to, one more thing. I wanted to ask Dr. Jenga here if he would be willing to come up and sort of help us think about, in terms of, I mean, the science keeps evolving, and that we can find an article to support any position we choose to take here, right? I think we have all seen all the, and been sent, all the articles. And so I want to make sure we are really grounded in what you're seeing happening now and what you're beginning to project out, if, to what extent that's possible. And I'm not asking you to give us an answer on what we should do, but just what are you seeing now as the head of sort of this effort?
Dr. Battle, do you mind?
I don't mind. Thanks, Dr. Jahanga.
Sorry. Thank you so much for having me, and good to see all of you in person. My main reason for coming here was exactly what you mentioned, Ms. Poofer Walker, is to just share where we are as a city, share some of what we've seen, both in contact tracing here in Nashville, and, you know, I guess maybe can get into some of the other share. I'm also Dr. Gil Wright for the Health Departments here as well, who's been very critical in a lot of this. So as all of you know, the cases in Nashville have gone up. We announced 163 today. Our active cases today went up to 1,865, where two weeks ago, we were at about 1,100. So as Dr. Battle said, the numbers have gone up in our city. Our rolling cases for 100,000 is 27.3. And to put that in perspective, we were at 15 two weeks ago, and before that, we'd actually had gotten close to 10. So the numbers, again, are going up. Transmission rate is 1.2, just the highest it's been since July 3rd. Now, specifically around school-aged children, and I looked at some of this data earlier today, and I just, I didn't ruin something. I just see some on my screen here, sorry. I actually operated today, too, and I'm less clumsy, I promise. In our community, so we have a total of 32,722 cases. In our community, if you look at just raw number... In our community, if you look at just raw number of cases in the 0-17 age range, that number is 3,279, or essentially 10% of all cases are in that 0-17 range. If you, if you break that incidence by per 100,000, so you adjust it so there's the same number of people, 6.7% of all of our cases are in that age range if you do a per 100,000. Now, a few weeks ago, the public health department did, did note that the incidence of cases from age 0 to 17, as well as the cases from 35, or excuse me, let me step back, 0 to 17 did increase by about 93% from, since the beginning of September. So the, so incidents in kids has gone up. So I, I think there's a misnomer out there that kids can't get this, that's wrong. Now, kids, thank God, are, are less affected as far as the critical illness stuff, and I'm happy to get into some of that. But in the same timeframe, we also saw ages 35 to 44 and 45 to 54 years, so presumably the parents' age, also go up by 27 and 32%, while the younger ranges, that 18 to 20-something range did drop. Now, thank goodness, that has now leveled off over the past few weeks. So I know I'm throwing a lot of data at you, and I apologize, just want to make sure we're on the same page. The one, the one highlight, though, I do want to make is looking at all the, the cluster data. If there are, if there have been, and this is data that just came out a few minutes ago, 156 total clusters in Nashville, so identified like two or three groups. Only seven have been called a school cluster. And to clarify what a school cluster means, though, only two of the clusters with 10 or more have been associated with schools. And when we associate it with school, it doesn't mean in school. In fact, I, I am unaware, and I just spoke to the chief epidemiologist right before I came here, there are no cases of, that the epidemiologist pointed out, of inter-school transmission in a classroom. There are cases, however, of, I believe it was a middle school group of teenagers who had a party afterwards, and there was a bunch of them. And 13 of, of the students who attended that party were, became infected. There was a school volleyball, and I used the word "school," it was a volleyball team that, and I don't know if it was school or travel, so pardon me for not knowing that detail, but school-aged children. And the 19 of those individuals became affected. Those are the only two clusters, big, larger clusters that involve children that have been tied to a school. Most transmission occurs at home, and, and that's, that's an important point. I do also want to reiterate what Dr. Battle said, and I, and I was gonna say this, and you said it, so I agree. Just because you have the word "school" attached to a building, what does happen outside does not prevent, you know, the community spread is the community spread. I mean, everyone here is part of the community. And so that is a, a valid thing to, to think through here. I have a bunch of stuff, but that's like all the data I have, but I'm glad to lead at your charge.
Ms. Tyler, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Oh, is Jeannie not done?
I'm gonna give these two, Jeannie, if you're down, I'm gonna give these two a chance to respond, and then you'll be right next. Now, if you don't mind me asking, are you two asking questions of Dr. Jahanga while he's standing up here? You don't have to stand the whole time, we really do appreciate you, and you just said you came out of ER or OR, so you can take a seat if you like.
No, I'm, it's, it's easier to dialogue, but.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Navarro, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bush then, and then Dr. McKinney.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jahanga, for being here today. Of those cases, because what I've noticed is that everything is tied to MNPS students. Everything is tied from the health department to MNPS, as far as it relates to our children, our health, the reasons why they can't. And I just want to make sure that I'm really clear today, that we have to be very careful about just putting MNPS children in a box. Because parents are getting very frustrated that their children appear to be less than, okay? We've got to be really careful, and I understand what they're saying, because everything is tied to you guys is the reason why we can't move forward, okay? I, I understand COVID is real, and that's not what I'm saying. Well, what I'm saying is, in order for us to move forward as a district, we have to make sure that we're fairly targeting, or not even targeting the right group, because we have, this is what's been happening since the summer and going into this, this school year. Now, you mentioned about 0-17, 93% of those cases that you all reported, I want you to kind of tell me a little bit about that. Of these cases, how many have recovered? How many of these students have recovered? Because we know that children between these age groups are less likely to have long-term effects. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair.
Okay. So of these, because I want to make sure we're very clear moving forward of how we target our MNPS students, because I want these students to have the absolute opportunities as their equals in this district and in other counties that are, that are connected to us, that, you know, so I just want to make sure, because it's getting a little bit frustrated because our students are always being targeted, and the reason why we can't move forward, okay? So of these students, where are you seeing these students? Is it all over the state? Where are these students, 0-17, that you all were able to do your tracing or your data? I just want to make sure it's clear.
Sure. So first of all.
Dr. Jahanga, before you respond, I do want to acknowledge the work of the task force that came together several months ago, that you are also a part of, and thank you for giving so much of your time. Part of, part of that conversation, just to level-set us here, was that we wanted to approach this for all children in Davidson County. And I just want to make sure that we do acknowledge that, you know, part of that work was having representatives from all types of schools and, you know, from across the city, although we're all governed a little bit differently, we thought it was very important for us to think about this, any protocols, any measures we put in place to protect a student regardless of the type of school that they attended. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and appreciation for all those who are part of that conversation, to make sure that we were not only protecting our metro students, but all students across.
Yeah, I know about the task force.
So thank you.
And my point of it is, I know about the task force, but everybody on that task force, kids went back to school, except for MNPS. Yeah, I know about the task force. So I just want to make sure that we clear up some of these narratives about what happens between our students, the students that were on the task force. So I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. I know about the task force.
Yeah, Mr. Bush, if I may, there's a couple of things I do want to highlight. I don't fully understand when you say "you guys," you say "you," tied to, because I'm an MNPS grad, so I, as somebody who.
You're a student, I'm not talking about you.
No, 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 I know. Please.
Thank you, Dr. Jahanga. Go ahead. No, go right here, Dr. Jahanga.
But here's the thing, ma'am, the data I provide to you is purely children of 0-17 in Nashville. I, I've never, first of all, I'm reporting data, and I've never tied it to any specific thing. I've also been very clear privately, publicly, TV, in conversations with you, conversations you've had with the mayor, and anyone else who I've spoken to, that I have not ever directed any specific school to do anything, because I, I am, we're part of this task force, we set basic ground rules, or ground guidelines, use a better terminology, and each school system, based on the variables that play, and it has made that choice. So you guys, as, as the leader of metro public schools, frankly, are, are the leaders of what metro public school does, not me, not Dr. Wright, or Dr. Caldwell, or anyone. I don't know if the fact you said about all the kid, all the people who have kids on the task force went factual, I don't actually know if that's a factual statement.
It is. So we can go, we can go back to this.
So to your question about the active cases, which I think is a very great, very great question, I don't have the answer for, but I can get that answer for you.
Okay.
Because the definition of active cases is if somebody who has been, who's at least 10 days out from when they were tested, and they were asymptomatic for 24 hours. So that's a very clear defined definition that we can get an answer for you to. What I can tell you is, thank God, no one has died who's between ages 0-17 in our city. Now, I will say, that's not to say that hasn't happened around the state and around the country. So I, again, I wanted this misnomer that kids aren't affected by this is, is wrong. Kids are affected, or something, there's a multi-systemic inflammatory syndrome that's been seen similar to Kawasaki's disease, that does show up in some kids. So I, I just want to make sure that that's clear. But I'm happy, and Dr. Wright, who's here, can, can help me get the number of active cases in 0-17, that is a great information I don't have for you.
And the outcomes, is what I'm saying, because I've said before, I mean, Dr. Battle had the same conversation, about we need to see, out of those, out of those cases, how many have recovered? Give us back that data, so that way we'll be able to best.
Well, I would tell you, if they're, the active cases, if we, it's thank goodness, because no one has died, if they're not active, you can make the assumption that they've, they are no longer active with the disease. Now, long-term sequelae from the disease, I don't, it's probably too early to tell that, and I don't know if we have that as a public health department, but very easily, if we get you the number of active cases currently, we can subtract it from number of total cases, and you can have the recovered numbers. Glad to, again, we're glad to get you that.
Okay. And just so, because I want this part of record, you said the number of these students from 0-17 are cases in Davidson County, from, not, not just MNPS students, but this is all across the Davidson County, from all schools, is that correct?
Yes, so, well, all, yes, any, any number I report are Davidson County residents, period. So I don't know their school status, I don't know anything else about them, just, that's age, and that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro McKinney?
Can I make one more comment about research, that I would do want to highlight that Dr. Wright has done? We have now, for several weeks, have expanded testing. I think it's something that, that has been discussed, and I want to make sure it's publicly heard. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays, at three locations, from 4:30 to 6:30, there's expanded testing for anyone, but it's geared towards if, people who want, who are in the MNSP community, but it's open to anyone. And I just want to give you those locations. It's Mondays at Cambridge High, Tuesdays at Maplewood High, and Wednesdays at Cochran Elementary, and that's been going on for a little while, and we're gonna do this mobile testing to, again, give access to testing to anyone, but especially after hours, because we did hear that during that, this assessment center hours were not necessarily conducive. So thank you so much, and I'll get you that information, Ms. Bush.
Thank you. I think we do have a couple more, you're welcome to sit, though.
I'm happy, if, you sure show up.
I appreciate it.
It's easier for me to, if you would like to.
Well, then you go ahead and stand.
Yes, ma'am.
Doctor. All right, Dr. Navarro McKinney?
Hi, how are, I'm sorry, good afternoon, how are you?
Good, doc.
So this, this is a little sensitive for me right now, this discussion around COVID. As, as all of you know, I missed our last board meeting because I lost a family member to COVID. Perfectly healthy, healthy individual, received COVID, and passed away within 12 days of contracting the disease.
I already hear that.
So it was very critical time. I think there has been a lot of discussion about the transmission rate within our young students from 0 to 17, and the recovery rate is high among those students in that same age. However, in that same light, there has also been a lot of talk about how that transmission rate goes to older generations within our school, within, within their families. And I think as a district, when we're looking at our students, we also have to look at their families, and be able to look at it as a holistic approach. When we're looking at it in that same light, we have to also remind ourselves of our teachers and our staff within our communities, because they are also in that population. We also have to look at our community as a whole. My question really comes back to that community spread. All the research that we have read around community spread and getting COVID under control within our schools and within our district, to put the safety protocols in place that we need so students can remain in school, has to come back to low community spread. I guess my question for you, Dr. Jahanga, and any representative from our mayor's office, is what are we doing as a community to reduce the community spread so our, our students can remain in our schools and continue to thrive within our schools? Because this is a effect.
Can I piggyback, because mine is just about yours?
Sure, absolutely.
So going back to that incidence of spread, previously, we were told that roughly kids who have hit puberty and older, 11 to 17, spread the same amount as adults do, and that kids under 11 don't spread as efficiently as adults. And so I just wanted to know, with more information, does that still remain true, or has that changed?
That remains, pretty much, at this point, that's what we know.
And, yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Wright?
As far as we know, that's, that currently is what we have for information regarding the virus at this point. It could change tomorrow, if the CDC gives us more information, but right now, that's it.
And to answer your question around what we're doing around the city, and I think that's a superb question, and one that I spend a lot of time thinking about, what I'm really proud of in Nashville is we have done, the most effective tool we have is our masks. We've been doing that, and we continue to do this, and for, since June 20, June 26th, when we had our board meeting that asked a mandate, and then by July 3rd, we had a mask mandate in, one of the first in this region. And what I think is important is now that, now that our numbers are going up, our regional partners, our regional counties, at least two, three counties yesterday reinstated their mask mandate, which I think is important. So first of all, we all need to lead by example, put our masks on, do the things we all know about. That's, that's critical. Now, we are also, as a city, looking at, at active cluster all the time. In fact, like I said a few minutes ago, there was a, a list of new clusters released. And if there's ever a trend that says, hey, we need to take some action to mitigate some spread ASAP, then, then I think the health department, the mayor's office has shown that they're willing to do that. Thank goodness, or maybe not thank goodness, I don't know how, however you want to look at, there hasn't, this spread we have right now is wide community spread, okay? It's not, there's not one specific thing that's causing it, which, which could be maybe harder to treat, right? Because you can't say, if I do blank, then this number will go up. But we know work, are, are masks, that's been shown anywhere that has a mask mandate. So we're doing that, we're trying to educate, and we're constantly following, following rules. And then we also are trying to provide the resources that we also know to help, like, like assess, access to testing. One of the reasons I mentioned the testing, mobile units that we have out there. We have our assessment centers, we continue to go. In addition to the mobile units mentioned for, that's kind of specific to schools, there's mobile units Monday, Saturdays and Sundays, all throughout, operated by Mahari Medical College, and that accesses anyone. And that's just some of the stuff, but I, I think it is concerning to all of us. I can't sit here and, and again, I'm sorry to hear about your family, that's very, that's a break. We had a 23-year-old individual, I'm sorry, I apologize, interrupt you, but 23-year-old individual passed away over the past couple of days with no comorbidities, as far as we know. I mean, this is not a joke, so I apologize.
Yeah. I, I do want to offer a little pushback. You did just give us some numbers of, of where the numbers have gone up across our community, from 1,100 to 1,865, where our transmission rate has increased all across our city. And, and I haven't seen as far as a citywide effort that is being done to mitigate and slow down that spread, which ultimately impacts our decisions here at our schools. And so we hear families, we get emails, and I'm sure all of you all experience this, we get emails every single day about our bars and our, and our, and our other facilities that are open, that are continuing to cause that spread, which ultimately impacts our schools and how we deal with transmission rates right here in our schools. And so I would like to really get some feedback, if we have a representative from the mayor, thank you, Dr. Jahanga, for your feedback, but what are we doing to really address, to keep those numbers low enough so that we can keep our children in school and allow families the opportunity of that choice? Otherwise, as a school district, we have to, we have to prioritize health and safety. And so it is a community effort that we do that, and, and we really feel like we need the community to help us in that part, with everyone doing that part, so that our students can remain in school, our transmission rates can remain low, we can put the safety protocols in place that are needed within our schools to continue to allow this happening. And, and unfortunately, right now, I haven't, with all the numbers you just have given me, what has been the mandate? I saw that Wilson County, which is one of the districts you referred to, just went back to a mask mandate for their district. What is Davidson County doing to help mitigate that spread, to bring it back down so that it remains safe for our, our community?
Well, I would say this, I would say that, first of all, we are, I mean, all of Tennessee's going up, okay? And, and we have, I think the initiatives that we have done as a city, and we continue to do, are, have made a difference. In fact, we are number 60, I think, I apologize, 62nd out of 95 counties, as far as one being the worst, 95 being the best. We're 62, we were number one. So I think that, that's important. So overall, the numbers are going up all around our state and our country, right? And I think we, as a community, I'm, I'm actually very proud of what we've done in, about being the first in the region to put safer at home, being the first in the region to put ma, mask mandates. And we are, you know, and, and we are watching these, these clusters, so I, I would say, if there was an evidence that, that restaurants specifically, or bars currently are, are causing the problem, we would take action. We've done it before, okay? Right now, unfortunately, there's such wide community spread, there's not just this one, one answer. I'm just, just, you know, I wish, I wish I could point to that one answer for you. And, and I share your concern that, that numbers are, are going up. And so, you know, I think a statewide mask mandate is helpful, I think a national mandate, national leadership, I mean, I'm, I'm not just trying to pass the buck above, but at a certain point, we're doing all we can as a community to do what we can, and, and people not getting complacent with masks is the most effective thing we can do as a community. But I, I appreciate your concern.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we are, we, you know, as a school board, our number one concern are our students and families and. concern are our students and families, and our teachers and our staff, and everyone that makes our system run. And so, we understand that as a community, that impacts our entire community in the decisions that we make, and I just want to make sure and keep it grounded on, this is a community effort around our schools. We cannot do it without you, and you cannot do it without us. This is a community effort, and we have to work together as a community to ensure that we're getting the strides that we need to get our students back in schools, to allow the choice that parents are wanting within our system, but we're grounded in the work that we're doing, and we're doing it as a team to make that happen. And I just have to put it out there, I'm sorry.
No, thank you for that, but we are getting low on time, so I'm going to reduce, and I am going to start timing, I'm sorry, but I'm going to reduce this next round. Frida has not been, I'm sorry, Mrs. Player Peters has not been able to speak, Mrs. Poopa Walker was next in the queue, and then Mrs. Elrod. We still have another full round, so then I'll add you back in, Mrs. Tyler, all right? Go ahead, two minutes.
So, I mean, I've been contemplating this, and what's the purpose of us being here, and in kind of our discussion, even going back to the retreat? And our first job as a board, our first job as a district, the first job of Dr. Battle, is to provide education to our students. That's where we fundamentally start. We cannot control what goes out, going back to Dr. McKinney's question. We have not had national leadership, we know that, we can't control that. There's been limited leadership on the state level, we know that, we can't control that. The mayor has been working, to a certain extent as he can, with that in control. The problem with the community spread, going back to Dr. Jahanger, is we can't pinpoint what's going on. If you listen to the National Scientist, you listen to the Health Department, the biggest part of community spread is what's happening in people's homes, whether they're having a family gathering, for whatever reasons, they're getting lax because it's family, they're not thinking, oh, my uncle has COVID, or my uncle is a vector. And so, the spread is insidious, because you don't have one major outbreak. It's many outbreaks, literally in people's homes, that we can't control. Only thing we can control is, once a student, an employee walks into our building, that's the only thing we can control. And our goal is, when we provide the education, can we provide a physical safe space for them to receive education? Now, you know, lately, people with the responsibility, as with, you know, being triaged, social services, doing all that, but fundamentally, we're supposed to educate kids. And question, what comes back to me is, when an employee, when a student step on our campus, on any campus, on any property, can we keep them safe? Protocols show that we have been doing that, but what we can't control is what people do soon as they step over our property. The problem is, people are exercising, whether it's politics, whether it's personal belief, their civil liberties of whether they're wearing a mask or not, whether they believe COVID is real or not, whether they feel that they're invisible, invincible, because it's not.
Go ahead, don't.
So, my thing is, we don't have the resources to create a bubble like the NBA. We don't have the resources to create a bubble for our students. We can't control what our students and teachers, or whoever does, soon as they step over it. So, my thing is, what can we control? But also, as leaders, what we need to do is, we need to have the foresight and be the trustee of the employees and the students, and look for thinking, and take that responsibility, and the buck stops with us. We can't decide when the mayor goes phase one, phase two, phase three. That's not our job. Our jobs control what happens at MMPS, and what responsibilities we take, and as information change, we adjust our governing decisions on basis of the information we have at the time, and we have to have the courageous decision to make changes if they see fit, because we are the leaders of the district. My personal stance is that we revert back to virtual learning, because they're saying, the experts, the scientists, saying that the sixth, eight weeks is going to be the darkest period we ever have, on top of a flu epidemic, a flu season that we're going into. So, now we have to control COVID within our system, we have to control the flu. And it's a hard decision, because I've been going back and forth, and my colleagues are bringing great questions, bringing great data, but at the end of the day, how do we give Dr. Battle the guidance to, for her to administer the education of our children, and how the teachers do that? Do we have employees to teach, we have students to receive that learning? And it's hard, because I know we're trying to provide that best education, we know that kids get the best education in person, but this back and forth of positive, being quarantined, being isolated, being exposed, it's a rolling thing, and it's like, what's the equity in that? What's the transition in that? And I think that's the hard part for us to discover, because we're trying to figure that. So, my line of stand, and it's hard, because I know kids need to learn, they need to learn the best part of environment, but this back and forth, and trying to have nurses who are epidemiologists, her base essentially acting, they're not acting as school nurses, they're being epidemiologists, and then teachers are being epidemiologists, and so that's taking, going back to Miss Poopa Walker's question of, what's the bandwidth? And how do you put the bandwidth of what we're supposed to do is educate the children? And so, I just wanted to kind of bring the conversation up, to give you guidance, what you need, because I figured that's why we're here. So, I'm going to stop there, just because, oh, I got two minutes.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Jahanger, I know you have to go back to the OR, because you're a doctor.
Thank you, and I do want to, I have an answer for you, Ms. Bush. It's 152 currently active cases, or 7.6% of active cases in Davidson County right now, from zero to 17 years old.
152 active?
152, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you also.
No, thank you for all the work you've done for our district, our city, we just appreciate you, all right? Thank you, Mrs. Player Peters, what are you really doing, because this was your first go-round, so you have?
Oh, just wrapping it up real quick. So, that's where I'm going, like, we need to provide Dr. Battle and the staff guidance. And I know students are dying to go back, I'm sorry about choice of phrasing, but are really want to go back and be with their friends, be with their teachers, learn in that situation, but my thing is, we also have to be proactive. That's our role of providing a safe, a physical safe space for it to go. And I know all the other factors, like going on, kids staying at home, but our first primary goal, and our first mission, and our duties, and our diligence, is to be, create a safe space. And to create that safe space, to make sure that the back and forth that we're going back and the rolling, and this is only our elementary kids, we haven't even gotten to the middle school kids, we haven't even gotten to the high school kids. And so, we can't control what the kids do after 3 o'clock, and the bells, you know, we can't control what their parents are doing. So, I think we need to start focusing the conversation, given our limited time, to give Dr. Battle the guidance of where we stand. And I'm trying to be the courageous person, and make a stand of what we're doing, and make that hard decision. And I know we're all in different parts, but I think we need to start going into that direction, because it's our job as a owner employee to give her guidance of what she needs to do, and where our stand is, and have the transparency to the parents, to the teachers, and to the public, where we stand with that conversation. So, I just want to kind of bring it back up to, back to our conversation at the retreat, what's our risk level, our tolerance, what's our fiduciary responsibility, and what are we going to do in giving guidance to parents, to teachers, and to employees, so they can plan their lives accordingly, and we can provide the best instruction, and safe is that we're not being responsible for putting someone's health in place, because we are not making the right discussions, or not having the right decisions to do the right thing, to provide a safe environment to learn.
Thank you, Mrs. Player Peters. All right, I have Mrs. Poopa Walker, Mrs. Elrod, Mrs. Tyler, then Mrs. Bush, and Mrs. Astor. All right, go right ahead.
I just, I'm just very quickly want to say, I know we're all hearing from parents, I know parents desperately want their kids in school, I know parents are desperate to keep their kids home, it's an impossible situation. I just want whoever's listening and watching to know, we hear every voice, teachers' voices, every voice, and so, we're just doing the best we can in an impossible situation.
Thank you for that. All right, Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. I think as a school system, and this is not just for us as MMPS, but just about every school system, is used to now being in charge of community spread of other issues, be it gun violence, be it food deserts, be it chronic absenteeism, be it anything, it becomes a school issue.
I was going to say.
No, no, that was. That was the quickest two minutes ever. It becomes a school issue, and so, this is no different. And we are, obviously, the largest school system within Davidson County. So, comparing us to another private school, which has, obviously, not only different funding, but a different structure, is not a true comparison. And it's also the same for surrounding neighboring counties. For example, the most likely county to hear from in my district is Williamson County. They only have 49 schools in their entire district. We had 50 schools last week that were impacted either by cases or quarantines. So, we are a much larger district. And then that brings me back to Ms. Jeanie Poopa Walker's comment of, we understand the stress and the mental load of parents and families. We are also, most of us, families and parents, or we have an vested interest, because we are on the school board. And we also believe that an educated public is the best public, and we take that awesome responsibility of educating our children very, very seriously, but that requires us to have a healthy public, be that our students, or be that our workforce. So, these things that we continue to receive, I would like to quickly address. First of all, this one from NPR is about three studies, two of them are in different countries. It's really important to make sure that you're aware that we've had a drastically different response as a nation, as we continue to talk about, and so, this is not a fair comparison either. I am impressed, and frankly, jealous, about some of the information I read within here, but we cannot be held to the same accountability. Additionally, the information that's in here from within the United States is about a 57,000-person study of childcare workers, which are, of course, a much smaller grouping of people, that are highly qualified, but they're highly qualified in disinfecting, and those kinds of things, and of course, also education. So, it is, again, anecdotal evidence. This study, that we've been asked to be prepared to discuss in this meeting, is from the Harvard Gazette, it is from an associate professor within Harvard, and he has a lot of information, he also directs you to their website, which, of course, I also went and read through for many hours. And his basic overall stance, which is also, when you get to the experts within this article, and the other ones from the Washington Post that we continue to receive, is that all of these suggestions are wonderful suggestions, and I should like to say that if you go to his website for more information, a lot of his suggestions are things that we're already doing, but they are, once again, and it's said in all of them, dependent on community spread. And we have said that as well from the beginning. It is concerning to me that we have parents that are saying to us, we chose in person, I meant in person. I don't know how the confusion happened, but please let me clarify, because I thought we were clear from the beginning. It is in person with an asterisk of depending on the community spread, all depending on community spread. So, if the community spread is low, if we have good numbers, then absolutely, we want your students to be in person, if that is what you need, if that is what you have chosen. But once again, as we have tried to be exceptionally clear about, we cannot control that community spread. And so, we need you to understand that in person does not mean in person forever, and you need to be prepared that these terrible decisions, because there are no good decisions sometimes, these are the best of the worst decisions, truthfully. Our students need to be able to come in and out, for whether it's a whole grade level, or a school system, or a classroom.
Better wrap it up. I'm done. Okay, thank you for that, all right, and thank you for referencing the articles. Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, I kind of want to go along with what Ms. Player Peters said, and Ms. Elrod was talking about, that we're so dependent on the community, and one of the people groups that we're not really focused on are the adults who are the teachers in our building, and if our adults are getting it at a spread rate that is much higher, and they're having to take time off to either quarantine or get better, then the kids who are in school are going to be negatively impacted by that. And so, I had a couple of questions specifically about what's going on with our virtual slash in-person teachers. The first one is, what are the number of teacher accommodation requests that were denied, and what percentage of the total asks does that work out to be?
I'm happy to respond to your question. We received 1,708 accommodation requests, and we only had 43 who were ineligible for accommodations, resulting in about a 2.5% denial rate.
Okay, and the other one I have is, what guidance has Central Office given to principals as to how they're going to handle the division of in-person and virtual teachers? I've been hearing that there's really big differences in what the different schools are doing. Some are letting virtual teachers stay home to teach, others are requiring their virtual teachers to physically come to the school and teach their virtual classes there, because they need that extra manpower, whether it's like to help with car rider line, or cafeteria duty, or something. I'm not sure if those schools where teachers are required to come in are requiring the teachers who have received an accommodation, because to me, that's a giant red flag, that we're not accommodating them, if we're requiring them to still physically come into a building where students are, even if they're not teaching those students. So, has the district given guidance to principals on what to do, and if not, why?
We absolutely have, so I can say yes to your question. And I also want to acknowledge that, as a district, we're actually going above and beyond what we're required to do in allowing for the accommodation process to exist, before our employees have to not be able, be allowed to support our students. So, we're going above and beyond with regards to trying to be accommodating and flexible to our teachers, given that we meet the needs of our students. And we have to weigh that out with the essential needs, duties, and responsibilities of our employees. But you heard the numbers from the beginning, and we have a very high rate of being able to be eligible for accommodations. And I am going to read specific language that we have shared with our principals and our school teams, and that is, if a teacher staff member has a completely virtual teaching schedule, you know, based upon their accommodations or the needs of the students, they do not have to teach from the building, it should be considered 100% virtual. No, that's with the caveat that, again, we're fortunate, we have amazing teachers and staff, and so, some of them do opt to come into the building for either resource access, connectivity, to lend a helping hand. But we understand the need to try to reduce the number of individuals, and specifically adults, in the building where we can, to make sure that we protect our students. And so, the guidance that has been sent out is that there is not a requirement, however, as we're working through accommodations, we first have to meet the needs of the students. So, you may have some who have combo schedules, because we're trying to exhaust everything we can to be as accommodating as possible. If a teacher is 100% virtual, there is not a requirement that they teach from the school building.
Okay, great. That's helpful to know, I appreciate that. I guess the last thing I just want to say about that is, we can't provide a high-quality education, whether it is in-person or virtual, if we don't have high-quality, safe, and healthy teachers. And so, my big concern is that we're exposing our teachers to something that will inhibit their ability to do their job. And so, I think my big concern is that we're making sure that we're doing what's best for students, and part of that is making sure that their teachers are going to be able to be with them and do their job effectively, and in order to do that, they need to be healthy. So, I think we need to really make sure that we're thinking very critically about how we're taking care of the staff that are in the schools, who are taking care of our students. And so, for me, those two things are linked very, very closely, and so, I kind of take umbrage to the people who are saying, the students come first, and if I want it in person, then there needs to be an in-person teacher, period, no matter what, because my student needs to have that, because that's what I wanted. And that's frustrating to me, because there has been, all along, all the caveats from the school system saying, there might be virtual learning within an in-person setting, and also, that our teachers are going to do the best job they have with what they're able to do. And so, I know my time is up, I heard the little runner, but I just want to make sure that we're keeping in mind that, in order for our kids to learn, they have to have someone to learn from, and we have to keep them healthy in order for them to be able to teach.
I love that, thank you, Ms. Tyler. All right, Ms. Bush?
Yes, thank you. So, I am, I've always been very transparent, and students definitely, their academics has definitely declined. We are widening the gap on our academics for our students. I'm deeply, deeply, deeply concerned about our children's future in this virtual space. I am not for taking away the options from parents, having in-person learning versus parents who want virtual learning. We are a large school district, but I'm getting really sick and tired of talking about depending on community spread. But the community doesn't dictate our children's future. We have to do this safely, and that's what I've always said, we can do this safely. We can come in the middle with our teachers, because our teachers are very, very important, and we care so much about them, and we want the best, and we want them to be healthy and stay healthy. We have got to come together and do this, and we have to come to the middle, come to the middle to get this done for these students. They are suffering tremendously. The academic gap is widening every single day. By the times our high schoolers get back to school, it'll be 10 months, 10 months of them not being in person. Virtual learning and the virtual space is Virtual learning and the virtual space is just a Band-Aid for academics. That's it. It's not doing what it needs to do. I have seen it for my own self. I have virtual learners in my center. I see it for myself, and I see it through their lens every single day I had them before they transitioned back into school. And every one of my students from virtual learners that went back to school, they are happy kids. I followed up with my teachers, "How are you doing? How's it going? Tell me what's, how are you feeling about this space?" I love it. I'm so happy I get a chance to touch my kids, and I'm so glad that they're, I can teach them, and now I know their deficiencies, and, and I can understand how to, how to, how to, to bridge those gaps. That behind the computer, it just don't do it. It just doesn't do it. The amount of rigorous work that our students are getting, and we're talking about double, triple work, because you're putting one year into a semester, it is, that's what it is. It's just work. It's just busy work. It's not really giving those students academic foundations and academic support that we really need for our students. So we're failing. We're already at the bottom, and we're failing. And we will continue to fail until we come to some type of middle that we can get these students back in person, or depending on parents, families who have underlying conditions that have chosen virtual, that that should be an option. I see it through my eyes. I've seen the virtual space. So I'm going to talk about experience, and I'm going to talk about the experience and the expertise that I now know about it, because I've seen it. So our children are failing. Our black and brown kids, we better be worried, because those students are not getting the support. We talk about equity? There's no equity right now. We have parents that have quit their jobs. Now they're back, they went back to work and finally, you know, those kids who can go back in person, and they have suffered tremendously. Our families have suffered financially, emotionally, mentally. Our kids have suffered, and they're going to continue to suffer.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Bush.
So I just want to say, my last statement, is that we better get this right. Community spread is going to be community spread. We cannot control this city when this city is open. It is wide open. Everybody do their thing every single day.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
And therefore, we cannot control it.
All right, go ahead.
But what we can do is control our children's education.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Masters?
Thank you. I just want to transition away from questions and state where, where my mind is on this as well. We, we live in a nation that doesn't put children first. We live in a state that doesn't put children first. We lead our state as a city in actually showing that we care, however, of the 49 main policy initiatives of our current city administration. Only three even mention education. None mention health. None specifically mention children. So the, those of us who care about children in Nashville, right here, it's within MMPS. And we are faced with a circumstance now, where Tennessee actually just reported an all-time high of COVID cases. We are in a circumstance where there are individuals in our community who place their right to go to a bar, or to go and gather over the right of our children to receive a high-quality education. And that is the reality of the situation. Because of that, we've been systemically underfunded for more than a decade. Do we have the funding to do this? Place children in cohorts, one-way traffic indoors, spacing in buses, a minimum of six feet of space between each child and adult in schools, face masks on all, Plexiglas desks at least six feet apart, placing them facing forward. Do we have the funding to provide all of that in all of our schools? Ventilation systems. Do we have the funding to hire additional support staff for the principal I spoke with earlier today, who is the sole support for one child who has some severe behavioral challenges? Because there are no paraprofessionals in her building who can help her with that. So she is faced with being a principal and with performing the duties of a paraprofessional. Do we have the funding to hire additional paraprofessionals? Do we have the funding to seek out EL teachers, exceptional learner teachers, who have no pre-existing conditions and can safely move into our schools and help those children learn? We don't have the funding for all that. Our community doesn't necessarily put children first, and that is what we are facing right now. And we are tasked with figuring out a way to ensure that all of these children can still receive a high-quality education. When we send children to middle school next week, the contact tracing requirements are going to become even more difficult. We're talking about siblings. We're talking about families who have children in multiple schools.
Thank you.
My fear is that then we face a situation where we have more children quarantining because of sibling contact, who are looking at a screen that doesn't have a teacher behind it.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Masters.
Thank you.
And I want to be clear that I appreciate you all's passion, so I'm sorry to have to cut you all off, but we do have to get our staff back to the work of the district. So thank you for these, and we will continue the conversation on Tuesday. All right, Ms. Poofer Walker, and then before you start, I'm sorry, Dr. Nabah McKenney and Ms. Player Peters, you both only spoke once, so if you wanted to speak again, you have the chance. All right, go ahead.
I just want to say that I, I think it's, first of all, I'm really moved by all of these, the thoughtfulness here, it's really powerful. It is putting our head in the sand to say that what we do every day is not connected to community spread. It is ignoring science to say that community spread is somehow unrelated to the work that we're trying to do every day. I am the first to say that, that virtual learning is not a replacement for, you know, in-person, and that there are students that are not doing well being at home. I, I, I get it. I'm worried, like we all are, about our homeless students. I'm worried about our students with disabilities who are choosing to stay home because they're afraid of, but they're not getting what they need. I'm worried about a lot of our kids. But at some point, you have to decide what is most important here. And, you know, we have people terribly afraid of sending their kids to school. We have parents terribly worried about, you know, our staff. I mean, we, we're all worried. I think we have to make decisions in the larger context of the reality on the ground. And, you know, I just think we have to use science, we have to use evidence, we have to be thoughtful, we have to be clear. And I think one of the most important things we can do is to continue to communicate with our parents, be clear on what's happening, be clear with one another to make sure there's no misunderstanding about where we really are and how hard this really is. I mean, we are getting the emails from parents, "My child is so happy to be back." That is fantastic. Do you know what that costs to make that happen? Right? And so, the human cost, right? And so, you know, I just think we have to, it's going to take courage, and, and we just have to continue to have the conversations. And I just want to say, equity is at the center of everything that we do, but none of this is easy.
Thank you for that. All right, Ms. Player Peters, then Mrs., then Dr. Nabah McKenney.
So, on Tuesday, it's scheduled for middle school kids to go back to school. So far in this conversation, we have not give Dr. Battle clear clients of what she should do come Tuesday morning. We have to make the tough decision to decide that. My suggestion is to pause, just because, you know, given statewide numbers, given how they spiked over 500 cases, that going back to what Ms. Masters said about siblings, it's tough. I get it. I haven't hugged my mother. I can't tell you the last time I hugged my mother. She has had surgery next week. Like, it's tough. It's hard. But all of us chose to run for office to be courageous leaders. And so we have to make the tough decisions to give our one employee the guidance she needs to minister education of our kids. I suggest we pause, because we need to be proactive. My dad did logistics of the army. You always have to think three steps ahead. I get kids where they are emotionally, and it's not easy. It's not easy for anyone in this country. We're all in the same boat. But for me, it's like, a child's life is more, keeping a child alive is, right now is more important than their discomfort, which is horrible. And I hate that kids are not having the great emotional experience. But we as adults have to model resilience. We have to do that. So I'm suggesting that we do pause enrollment for middle school for at least two weeks to see what happens, and hopefully, the community hears this and do the right thing so our kids can go back to school. I want our kids back to school. I really do. But right now, everyone's not holding up to the responsibility outside the community and expecting our kids. Our district is the size of Jackson and Madison County combined. Within Davidson County, we have to manage a whole city and county within a city. And so we can't keep the bubble of over 100,000 people. I wish we could. If we could, I would do it. But we couldn't pay for textbooks last year, y'all. We couldn't pay for English books. So how are we supposed to keep health filters? How are we supposed to replace all that stuff when the city hasn't given the funding for it? If we can't even have the funding for educating our students for the basic thing, we can't do it. So I know it hurts, and I know it's uncomfortable, but, okay, I was wrong.
I want to let y'all keep going, because the passion is high here at this table, but I appreciate it. All right, Dr. Nabah McKenney?
I'm sorry. It took me, give me just a second. I, you know, really in thinking about where we are as a district, I have had, over the last couple of weeks, talked to many, many families who are on both sides of the spectrum, where they are happy that their kids are returned, but they're concerned about the outbreaks that are happening in our schools. I've had parents who are in the virtual learning space, and it's working well for them, and their children are thriving, and some of them are having challenges. I've also listened to parents who are concerned about the learning loss and the gap that is happening within our, with our students right here in the district. And I've talked to teachers who are scared about returning, and some teachers who are just fine with, with being in the classroom and happy to see their, their children. And so I have, I've heard it kind of all over where, where our community is. Just today, I talked with a teacher who was very excited and wanted our schools to return until the outbreaks started happening in their school, and now they're rethinking what's going on. When we look at the, the ratios within our classrooms, for social distancing to occur six feet apart, it's only happening at 2.5 to three feet apart, not six feet apart. We have high numbers of students within classrooms. Our ratios are 1 to 24 average. Am I correct? 1 to 20, 1 to 24 within our classrooms. So they can be as low as 13, high as 24, 25 students, depending on the classrooms. Our middle schools, as they return back, we want to make sure we understand what's going on when our middle schools return. Our ratios are looking at anywhere from 19 students to 30 within a classroom, where social distancing is recommended at six feet apart. When we look at our hallways, we're looking at all of those different things. When transmission rates are high across our community, that feeds back into our buildings with our students, that feeds back into our teachers and our staff, and, and it, and it takes that whole system to work. I agree. If we don't have teachers to teach, our kids can't learn. And we have to have it all in place. The other factor that we're, we have, we've missed and we haven't talked about is our bus drivers and our support staff, who are also facing concerns of transmission and, 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 and being exposed to this information. I mean, exposed to this. So we have to make a critical decision, and we have to look at it holistically, everyone. I don't think anybody on this board, I hope no one on this board thinks that we don't care about our students.
Thank you.
Because we do. Every staff member here, every teacher here, every support staff here, every community member cares about our students.
Thank you for your thoughts, Dr. McKenney.
But we have to prioritize, I will, I'm sorry. We have to prioritize the health and safety. We have to Maslow before we bloom. We have to make sure that we take the base, take care of the basic needs of our kids before learning can take place.
All right, thank you, Dr. Nabah McKenney.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I know you're passionate. I know you've had a rough week also, so I'm trying to be mindful of those things. I'm gonna, we're gonna end with vice chair thoughts, and then I'll kind of wrap us up so we can give you some guidance, Dr. Battle.
Okay. So I know we've talked a lot about the size of our school and our district in comparison. It's worth noting that we are a part of Great City Schools, which is a coalition of the 76 largest school systems in the nation. Out of those 76 schools, 42 of them are still virtual, and they're virtual for some time. Additionally, outside of those 42, there are four that have gone back in person since the beginning, and one of them have gone back, one of those four have gone to virtual since then. And the rest of those 29 are still opening at this time with a phased-in report, or phased-in approach, and one school appears that they did not report in. So most of the school systems within our size are doing the same thing as us. They're phasing in around this week or last week, some of them into September. And so we may have a difficult time identifying best practices. So I'm going to give my suggestion and then my expectation upon that. So my suggestion is that we keep elementary school students inside their classrooms, but that we do not continue with middle school. My expectation is what we do with that time and what we learn from that, is that between our eight months of experience of not being inside of a school, but trying to be, and of course, from this, from other neighboring districts that are, you know, battling the same kind of numbers as us, to similar-sized districts, I want us to be able to try to come up with some clear metrics for parents to follow. Once again, we want to be clear that your student, even though they're in-person, may have to come in and out. So as clear as we can, what can we come up with so that you feel aware and knowledgeable about what's going to happen with your students, so that you can best schedule yourself and your work? We understand that you are an important part, as a parent, of our community and our workforces. I want to make sure that we, as a school system, identify needs and what we need to do to make sure, again, that this is the best experience and the safest experience if we continue with in-person elementary. I want us to have better and more timely communication of cases to parents and teachers and to the board. And I want us to identify virtual improvements that we're going to do inside of our virtual school, and see what needs to be done inside those virtual experiences and what we need to prioritize as a board for not only expenditures, but maybe structure, or whatever may need to happen, for not only our students that are currently choosing to stay virtual, but for those that are affected by quarantines and cases. And so those are my expectations of what we do, while we try to make sure that we keep on the safest track we can, with a focus on health, and of course, once again, respecting the awesome and incredible responsibility we have of educating our students.
Thank you so much for that, and thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to the staff that have taken time out of your busy days to be here with us. I'm going to try to summarize, because we've had a lot of great conversation, but again, this was a work session, this was an emergency work session that we decided to call because of the nature of the increase in cases. There's nothing on the agenda, so there is no motion. I'm just trying to wrap up, and I've been trying to take notes as best I can, based on the feedback you all have given, and of course, kind of wrap it up in a package for you, Dr. Battle. So follow me down the rabbit hole. Again, I'll try to make this quick. I, I've been going back and forth in my mind about whether or not to talk about the disenfranchisement and the historic inequity. You know, if you've been an African-American or a person of color, if you've been poor, if you've been differently-abled, you have likely been made to feel like, if an authority figure suggests that something is what's supposed to happen, then you just do it. And if you don't, you're arrested, you're chastised, you are made to feel as if you had done something wrong. But all of a sudden, people are uncomfortable because we've mandated masks, we decided at one point to maintain virtual, and all of a sudden, we're infringing on people's rights. I think that's interesting, but I won't go down that rabbit hole, because I'm narrowly focused on MMPS right now. I think it is, again, I just think it's interesting that if an authority figure historically has said something to disenfranchise people, everyone just doesn't. All of a sudden, now though, we have those who have not been historically disenfranchised who are speaking up, and they claim to be advocating for equity. So we'll talk more about that in budget season, because you know how I feel about that. I appreciate everything that you all have said around the comparisons, or what I deem are inappropriate comparisons to MMPS and the $11,000 per child we receive versus the $25,000 to $35,000 our private schools receive, compared to the $20,000 some of our neighboring counties receive per child. There's no way that that comparison can be the same. We are different, not only because we are much larger, not only because we are a different urban district, but because of the size of our district. Don't compare us to anyone except possibly Memphis, and they're completely virtual. Just something to note. I, I, I think it's also interesting that we continue to focus on just what's happening to children, as opposed to what's happening to their families as well. Children are certainly our, our largest priority, but that's because we have adults to support them. It's because we have multi-generational families that we have to be aware of. It's because we have teachers, staff, paraproses. It's because we have teachers, staff, parapros, administrators, who are also being impacted by decisions that we make. So it doesn't, it, it matters that everyone is impacted by it. If a child dies, if their grandparent dies, if a child is safe, but someone around them is exposed, we still bury the burden, or carry the burden. So based on what I've heard here, I think we've seen a number of outbreaks, even in our middle and high schools, that have not been back in person, but have been just in athletic or extracurricular activities. So it's interesting that they're not officially back in our buildings, but we've still had outbreaks. That gives me pause. It sounds around the table like that's giving you all pause also. I know we don't completely agree on everything. I know we are all trying to find some kind of middle ground. But, Dr. Battle, I think it would, it is my job to express to you that we would ask that you pause the in-person, the moving to in-person learning for middle and high schools. We understand that elementary schools are already there. So I, I think we continue to wrap our arms around them, make sure we offer the best supports we can, but continue to monitor what's happening in those schools. And if, community-wide, these cases continue to increase, then unfortunately, we might need to take those elementary and exceptionally-led students back into virtual learning. But for now, again, I think it is the consensus of this board, based on our discussion here, that we are not comfortable moving forward when middle and high schools are much larger than elementary schools. They have much larger, larger classes, much more narrow hallways, and just much more historic exposure to the, to the, to the COVID disease. Again, there's no vote here, so I think with that, we will wrap up. But again, if you have any other questions or thoughts for Dr. Battle, please feel free to share them individually. Please feel free to share them via email. Now, I do want to caution us. It's great to, it's wonderful that we are able to receive information from ours, or from Dr. Battle and/or her staff. But if you wouldn't mind, try to keep any articles or discussion to the board floor. So if there's something that you really want us to share, please feel free to send it to Dr. Battle for her review. And then feel free to send it to Dr. Sevier, if he, if you want them, it to be sent to us just for information purposes. But we do not need to be discussing or talking about anything unless it's on the board floor.
I am not in agreement. I want to make sure that I am on record, I do not agree with it, and you have the wrong numbers.